Six o'clock, the committee, the whole meeting will come to order. Let it be noted, all members of the [inaudible 00:01:15]. Alderman, Tenario, who is accused. First order of business is approval in minutes of July 13th.
Move approval.
Second.
Move and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carry. Item D2, a presentation regarding budget challenges. I'll turn it over to our city administrator, Rebecca.
I believe the mayor wants to make a comment.
Hey, thanks. No, I'll stand because I'm going to be incredibly brief. We've all been here before, and every year I kind of lay out the struggles and the challenges in this budget for all the reasons we talk about repeatedly. And just basically this year, it's essentially worse than what we're usually struggling with. So I'm going to let Rebecca do the presentation to kind of outline why we are, why we're where we at, and what we can do. And as always, we're open to ideas, suggestions, thoughts from everybody. But yeah, it's going to be a rough rest of this year. So now that I've made everybody happy, I'm going to sit and let things roll. Thank you.
Thanks. Rebecca Grill, I'm the city administrator, and I'm here with Jason Casmeri, he's our finance director. So about a month ago, Jason came to me to let me know that there was probably going to be a big problem with our levy limits this year as far as changes, or challenges. And we talked about, because we usually are dealing with expenditure restraint challenges, and we had the information verified with LRS, and I just wanted to go through kind of the total picture of the, of all of our challenges first. Most of you have heard this before, but I think it's important to have, to see everything together, and then talk about the levy limits and expenditure restraint, and then, like the mayor said, what he could possibly do this year. So there are going to be a lot of, I think, employees watching this, so it'll be repeated for you, but it might be newer for some of them. So I just, please bear with me if you've heard it like 27 times or something. So this, our 2021 general fund budget was a little over $64 million. That went up 1.35 million, and then the tax levy is 60% of our general fund budget. That was about $38 million, which was an increase of almost 1.2 million from 2020. The general fund is our primary operating fund, majority of departments' budget comes from here. This is just for context when we get into explaining a little bit more of the different components of the budget. So we have revenues that comes from a variety of sources. The majority is the tax levy, 60%. Then we have 20% that comes from intergovernmental, the state, state aid, transportation aid, things like that. Then we have charges for services, transfers, penalties and forfeitures, miscellaneous, other taxes, and license permits and fees. So all of those are just a little piece of the pie. The tax levy is the majority of our revenue. Want to add something?
Yeah, so even though intergovernmental is, you know, a smaller piece compared to taxes, just keep in mind that's still a pretty significant chunk of the revenue that the city does get every year from the state. Most of that is from the state.
Their expenditure restraint money too, right?
Correct.
Were special assessments in there?
Special assessments are not part of the general fund.
Right.
Special assessments go into our capital projects fund.
Okay, so that's completely outside of this?
Yes.
Right. So here's just a little more breakdown of the revenues. We have the real estate and personal property, and then the other taxes are the mobile home, the room tax pilot. This year and last year, room tax went down significantly. A little more about the grants and aids, intergovernmental, the shared revenues, expenditure restraint, municipal service payment, we get that from the state fair, for the state fair, and then we have contracts with them, and then the transportation and highway aids and various other grants and aids. Permits and licensing, you're familiar with the number of permits and licensing we have here. So any increases for these fees are helpful to the revenue side, but as you can see, that's just 3% of the portion of the revenues. Penalties and forfeitures, what we get for courts and parking violation, court fines is 3%, and then other miscellaneous is 12%. Now, the investment income, I believe that's down significantly this year. Like a million dollars, is it?
Well, for 2021, we had a budget of a million dollars, and I estimate that will probably come in closer to $200,000 for 2021. So that's something that I have to take a look at yet to see where the budget's going to end up overall. But the market tanked, and obviously, we can't budget a million dollars again for 2022, so that's also going to be a bit of a hit to our general fund budget.
Here's a little visual on where does our money go with the general fund budget. The majority of it goes to public safety.
Probably not.
And then engineering and public works, general government and health culture and recreation. Those are broken down. These are the departments that you can see. There's a lot of us under the general government. Public safety does include bins and planning and zoning, economic development. However, the police and fire department make up 53% of that, 56%. Then engineering and public works, self-explanatory, and the health department, senior center and the library are coming at 7% with health culture and recreation. Any questions on this? These are some of the things that are not in the general fund, just for context. So we mentioned the capital projects already, then we have tourism commission and debt service, and then we have a variety of enterprise funds, and then our health insurance fund and our liability, internal service funds. So none of these have anything to do with the challenge right now. They're part of other challenges. As I've mentioned a variety of different times in the mayor, we talk about the challenges we have, and the ones that are specific to the city are personnel cost, facility repairs and maintenance, the streetlights, our aging infrastructure, and then our taxpayer financial limitations. I just wanted to walk through and break down these challenges a little bit more for people to understand why they are such large challenges. The person, personnel is 80, almost 86% of our budget. So personnel means salaries and benefits of the employees here. So when you're in a crunch, it's pretty challenging to cut a lot of things and not positions or people when only 14% is not allocated to them. We have 664 positions total, 104 of those are non-benefit, like election workers, interns, and our provisionals that work in the summer, and temporary employees. We do have 560 benefited position. We went down in, from 2020 by 13 when we did the reduction in workforce program. Here's just another visual with the actual dollar amounts for the salaries and benefits. So in 2020, it was 34.4 million, and then it went up to 35 million, up about a little over 600,000. Our health and dental for our active employees, nine point, almost 9.7, and then almost 9.8 in 2021. And then the retiree benefits went up. It looks like the larger portion, but it's a smaller original amount. So the salary increases were offset by the reduction of the employees that we, that went through last year, but the increases were due to the contracts we have for the police department and fire department employees. You're familiar with our streetlight conversion project. We've, I don't want to say too much of it about it because I get confused about the high voltage, low voltage thing, but generally speaking, we need to spend between 40 and 60 million dollars to convert our streetlights before we don't have any inventory left for the kind of streetlights that we have. So this needs to be occurring in the next few years. You're familiar with approving some of these projects already, but, so this is a 40 or 60 million dollar cost. Then we have the facility study that was completed in 2018. We need to deal with 60 million dollars in maintenance and repairs. The 30-year cost of that, each year it goes up 3% inflation, so it could potentially go up to $92 million the more we put things off. This is some of the reason we've been talking about different options for facilities in lieu of the repairs and maintenance. Aging infrastructure, our streets, we have almost 175 miles of them. We're on a 70-year replacement cycle. The water mains, about 216 miles, and then we're on 159-year replacement cycle for them. And the sanitary sewer mains, we have a little over 120, 72 miles, and we replace, the replacement cycle is 81.4 years. The miles paved per year, Pete is not here today, I don't believe, but we've been going down each year, and we're way under what is preferred to have, but we're down to about two miles per year that we're paving, just due to a variety of different reasons, a lot of them fiscal. And then we have a, this is a demographics of our community, I just wanted to demonstrate the financial limitation of some of our residents here. We have the population estimate from the last census is a little less than it was. I think we lost like 80 some people. But we have 52% owner occupied, so that means 48% rental units, and then the median value is about 146,000. The median household income of 2019 was about 52,000. I'm sure that the number for 2020 and 2021 will be tremendously skewed just because of all the layoffs and everything with COVID-19. Before that, before COVID-19, there were 12% persons in poverty and 15% people over 65 who were generally on the fixed income. So this is just an important consideration when you're talking about raising taxes or borrowing or increasing things, just, I was just good to remember that context. So those were the city challenges. Now that we have the state imposed limitations, usually we're talking about expenditure restraint program. We'll be talking about both of them today, but a little bit more about levy limits than Expenditure restraint program, you're all pretty familiar. The state gives us aid if we limit growth in our spending, and then it's calculated by the, it can't exceed inflation plus an adjustment based on the growth in our property values. We get about $1.5 million per year. This is one of the intergovernmental revenues we receive. The average expenditure restraint program limit in the seven, last seven years was 2.1%. In 2016, we had one of the lowest at $400,000. If you remember, those of you that were here at that time, we had a ability to change our health insurance program in lieu of laying off people. It wasn't necessarily the most popular thing with the staff, but we were able to maintain the same number of staff members by the vast amount of savings we had with changing that. The history of the expenditure restraint program, it was established in 1990 due to the way the state aid was determined. Aid was determined based on how much you spent, so it really encouraged people to spend more because then you would get more aid. So there, that was, the state wanted to put an end to that. So they put the ERP in place. Then in 1994, you had to have, you had to have a tax rate of five mils or more, and then it was just changed to the general fund. And the funding was set at $42 million for the program for 240 municipalities. In 2003, nine years later, the funding was changed to $58 million, but the number of people of municipalities participating is 319. Since 2003, that funding has remained the same. So for the last 17 years, the funding has been the same. Any questions on expenditure restraint?
So just to point out here, what we just went through, that's the state-imposed expenditure limit that we have. Now we're getting into the state-imposed levy revenue limit.
So it's the other side of the book.
It's the carrot and the stick. The expenditure restraint program is the carrot, the incentive that you will give you more money if you keep your expenditures down, but then if you go further, then there's the stick, and that's the levy limit.
Right.
On the ERP, can you go back one slide? So funding's remained at the 2003 level, so there's still only 58 million dished out every year. Cross, has a number of towns villages changed also? Does that continue to go up?
I didn't find any information on that. I'm not sure.
And there's no inflation adjustment?
There hasn't been.
There hasn't been. So it's really, it's really moved a long way backwards for us.
Right. I just, I think it's important to know because a lot of people think that a lot of the decisions about finances are made at the local level where you are making them. However, we're being limited by the state level a lot, and there has to be a greater understanding of that by the residents and employees because we're just at, we're just coming to the end. So levy limits, as Jason said, that's kind of the other side. They prohibit us from increasing the base levy by more than the percent change of the net new construction. Net new construction, it includes the TID activity and the value is compared to the equalized value to calculate a pretend, percentage change. If you exceed the limit, it's a dollar-for-dollar loss. So the shared revenue we would get from the state if we exceed the limit, they would take that much away from us. So what do we, we'd have to like, $10 million?
We're almost 10 million a year in state aid, so that would be a huge hit to just say, you know, we don't want that.
So the history of the levy limits, they came a little bit after the expenditure restraint program. They were enacted in 2005 for 2006. It was a way to slow the property tax increases. They were linked to the net new construction, as I said before, but there was a floor of 2%. So you were, even if you, your net new construction was .01, you would still be able to go up at least at 2%, the maximum. In 2006 to 2010, the floor varied between the 2% and 3.86%. So this allows people, our municipalities like ours, where we have, are fully developed or slow growth, we were protected at that time. So it was, the floor was either 2% or 3.86. So we could always probably spend more because our net new construction was not equal to these values, probably wouldn't go back that far. In 2011, they changed the law, so the, any increase was limited to the property values of net new construction, but the floor was lowered to zero. So municipalities like us and other slow-growth communities locks, lost the protection of minimum increases at that point. And Jason pointed out to me earlier today, at least the floor is zero because some people have negative.
Negative, yeah. Who's worse off than we are?
Actually, quite a few communities in Milwaukee County.
Jason put this together, I mean, Cudahy, Hales Corners. St. Francis actually, I don't know why, but they went up 5.8% that, I don't know what they built there.
I think Hales Corners still has cornfields, doesn't it? Why aren't they buildings?
West Milwaukee is .2, Shorewoods .2, Greendale is .2, West Alice is .8. So we'll get into that and what that means. A little bit more on the levy limits versus the expenditure restraint. We've typically been constrained by the ERP. The last seven years, we've been allowed to increase the budget about 2.1%. As I mentioned before, the, in 2016, we had a very low year, so that's when the change to the health line was done. The expenditure restraint applies to 100% of the budget, the general fund budget, while the levy limits just apply to that 60% because it's the portion of our revenues. They have averaged .7 over the past seven years. And in next year, our constraint will be the levy limit and not the expenditure restraint. Then there's an obvious question. If the seven-year average of the levy limits was .7% and the ERP was 2.1, why weren't we constrained by the levy limits over the past few years? You are able to do certain adjustments to, to your levy limits, and one of those is a debt service adjustment. That has been used by the city to take advantage of the higher expenditure restraint program limit.
So in years past, the city did not take advantage of that particular adjustment, and over the past few years, has slowly started to use more and more and more of that until we finally came to our limit. We can't use that adjustment anymore.
The purpose of the adjustment was to allow municipalities to cover their debt payments, and then, as Jason mentioned, we've been aggressively using it to offset the levy limits since 2016. And then the effect of that is that we don't have any of that capacity left in 2022. So what does this all mean? For the 2022 budget, the increase to our general fund, we're estimating the increase to be a limit of $350,000. So at this time, based on current requests, we have to cut $1.7 million, the gap between the allowable levy increase and the 2022 budget request. Now, you probably, we, in the past few years, we have closed those gaps, but we've done a lot of cutting in the, in the budgets already, so there's, there's not a lot to reduce any longer in that 14%. And even, we've done some reductions of staff through attrition and combining positions and things like that. So that's how we've been able to work through the last few years. And prior to my, my belief with the, not using the debt capacity earlier than that and the ability to remain under that is the, when Act 10 went, went through, the city gradually increased the employees' contributions to the healthcare. So that helped each year offset that, and that ended, I think, right before I got here. So just a little more information, we have the American Rescue Plan Act that the city is getting, yes, we're getting $30 million. Why can't we just use that? So there's limits on the ARPA funding. There's ineligible uses our general infrastructure other than the water, sewer storm, sewer storm, and broadband. So you can only use it for water, sewer, storm, and broadband. You cannot use it for debt payments or insurance, can't use it for legal settlement or judgments, deposits to pension funds, premium pay for, certain premium pay amounts for employees and operating costs, except as they relate to COVID-19 impacts. If you fail to comply with the requirements, you would possibly lose their, the future allocation. So we've, we've, we're getting 50% of the money this year, and then we'll get 50% next year. But if we do something, spend it in the wrong way, we won't get that second part. And I believe also, if we even got the second part at some point in the future, when they get around to reviewing these, we would have to pay back whatever misuse of the funds were. So it's important that we are not using these for regular operating costs. Do you have anything?
Yeah, and we've, we've gone over this in the past as well, but you wouldn't want to take this one-time money and, and fill an operating annual budget hole. All it does is create a bigger problem in the next year than you can even handle.
So in other words, we've got more money, then we can spend more, right?
That's what people think.
That's the bottom line, right? So the $20 million, I mean, cannot be used on certain services, right, within our structure? Is that correct? So where the money could be used at? I mean, a little bit at a time, how can it be?
We, we brought that before the council, I believe, in June, and then we talked a little bit about using it for the water and sewer infrastructure. We, I believe in July, it was approved to use it for this year's, or next year's projects for water and sewer. So we're still working through other things, so that'll be coming, but we know we can't use it on the operating budget.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to put this slide in here because a lot of times I get questions from people. They're more like snarky comments.
Yeah, for sure.
Not everything is funded by the general fund budget, as I explained before, that we have other funds. One of the things is the tourism commission. We get, part of the room tax that we collect has to go to tourism promotion and tourism development. So a lot of the recent activities that we've spent this on is the marketing and our branding and city gateway signs and things like that. So as hotels rent more rooms, we'll be able to spend more on those types of things. So just so people have an understanding of, you're talking about, we don't have any money, but you're putting a new sign up. It's probably not from the same pot.
And that is restricted for that. We don't have a choice. We have to use it on tourism promotion and tourism development.
And then murals, that's another question I've gotten. Why are we spending money on murals when we don't have money? Well, that's funding from outside source, the First Ring Industrial Redevelopment Enterprise. It's a community development entity, so they, it's run through our economic development It's a community development entity, so they, it's run through our economic development department and they, we get funding to do these types of activities so that we have the West Ellis Living Streets program. So I believe tomorrow, voting on free more murals, so, but that is outside the operating Then the last one is more, more policy decision. So sometimes you do spend money on, in the general fund budget, on things that people might not think are the right way to spend money, but, you know, doing things like adding parks or doing streetscaping and things, that is more of a long play for economic development and things like that. So the prioritization of those projects changes, but it is important sometimes, but people don't always understand that either. So. Did you have anything? All right. Because I like to make lists, we'll have some bullet points here. So the next, the next steps, we're working on putting together the budget, the mayor's recommended budget for the council. Be meeting with departments to talk about additional opportunities for reallocation of their staff or staffing adjustments, service delivery charges and administrative cost recovery. I already mentioned about the fact if we increase our license and permit fees, even if we would do it 100%, it would still be limited. Every little bit helps, however, it's not going to close our $1.7 million gap and it won't close it each year because each year we're going to have probably a bigger gap. We did have the structural deficit committee recommendations that was brought to the council and it's been delayed in being brought to the standing committees by myself. So we put together a report. I didn't do it on purpose, I'm just, I'm just taking the blame of why it wasn't done earlier. We'll be bringing it back to the, each committee at the next council meeting so we could have some discussions at your different standing committees on options for that. And then just educating people on the budget challenges and limitations. It's important for people to understand that this is something they might want to contact their state legislators on regarding, especially if they don't like the changes in service delivery and things like that. The long-term, work with other municipalities to create joint service delivery models. We talk about, a lot about intergovernmental cooperation and, you know, those type of agreements. I think there's a lot of potential for opportunity there with these other municipalities that have just as low as, or lower increases. They're looking for some abilities to do that and we do have a lot of services that we can help other municipalities out with, but it would help alleviate some of our levy constraints. We're also talking about the city buildings and what next steps are that, those going to be, working to consolidate them possibly so we don't have as much repairs and maintenance, sharing employees and then also returning the parcels to the tax base. And we also need to work with the league and other municipalities to educate the public and how this, the way that our property tax model is set up, it's not sustainable, especially for a municipality that's fully developed here. Even if our development department, I don't know how many millions of dollars of development we'd have to do.
I didn't do the math because it's, it's not going to be there, but, yeah, so just to talk about this last bullet point here and just reiterate how unsustainable this is. We've averaged net new construction at 0.7% over the last seven years. The last couple of years have been a little bit higher. If you look prior to that, it drops to only a half of a percent. It's just, and we're not the only municipality that's dealing with this. Every municipality that's fully built is struggling as well. If you look at Milwaukee County, the, the net new construction numbers are low if you, if you ignore like Oak Creek who has land to develop yet. And yes, you know, as a, as a municipality, we want to deliver a good level of service and we want to be efficient and not have any wasteful spending, but you can only do that to a certain point and a half a percent or less or something like that every year just isn't going to work in the long run. So at some point, something has to change because you, you know, there's only so many things that are responsible to cut.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So Rebecca, the, the facts stand, so, so we need to reduce $1.7 million, right?
For, for 2022.
2022. See, you know, I mean, I don't like to hit the grindstone like 20, 20-some years ago about the fact that, I mean, I always think ahead of time, you know? At that time, I mean, I, I know it's repeating something that probably some people don't want to hear about it, but back then in West Milwaukee, when they, the founder, fire department, I mean, at that time, there was over a million and six, the city of West Ellis would gain by us taking over the fire department. Instead of Milwaukee, we're smart enough to take over the fire department service. But we, at that time, I mean, I like to say the name, former chief bearers, he was total against that. We cannot do that. It's not really something that we, we have to follow, you know? I mean, we don't want to get involved with other communities. But, but the fact, what I'm trying to say is, at that time, by retaining a few firefighters and putting some of the fire departments, people, personnel that we had, I think we would have been able to do that. So what I'm talking about now, million and seven, well, maybe today, maybe we would have been able to use that money. You know what I'm saying? I was thinking, I had a time, the future of a government, how can you sustain services? So there was an opportunity to extend ourselves at that time, but stubbornness, be like, well, I mean, I want to get something like that, that's, that's more of a political move, and that was totally wrong. I always felt strong that way. That's why I like to bring this forward. That was totally wrong, a big mistake and from, not from the council, but the council, of course, went along with that, but because the head of department says, oh, this is the wrong thing for the city to do. It was a big, big mistake. So we talking about right now, about intergovernmental service to get involved with other communities. I think it's not a bad idea. I think that's, that's a good thought to follow because at that time was not done. Maybe today we could have been better off if it was done then, you know, in West Milwaukee. We could do provide some service for West Milwaukee right now, but the fact that is, sometime you have to have an open mind. That's why maybe we are in this position now, you know, 1.7 million in a hole, so we should have to kind of look into it, see what we can do about it. Thank you.
Any questions? Any members of the council?
Mr. Chair, has the lead in lobbying changed the funding level for the cities? It's been 17 years. I would think they would be lobbying for the cities.
Mayor.
Short answer, yes. I can't tell you how many hours I've spent in Madison and how many lobby days the league has had and how many think tanks they have brought in from various nonpartisan, nonprofit groups and study from universities on how antiquated our financial system is. We've had state senators at our events, we've talked to them about. We've had Robin Voss at our events that we've talked to them about. We've had democratic leadership at our meetings and conferences that we've talked to them about it. We have continuously stressed that being so continuously dependent on the property tax is not, like, is just not continual, it's not able to continue like that. And anytime you bring up something to diversify that funding source, whether it's raising, you know, you look at our sales tax in Wisconsin compared to every Midwestern neighbor where at least 1%, sometimes 3% and more lower in Wisconsin than in Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, Michigan, Indiana, which we don't technically border, but they're a neighbor. And it's just all falling on deaf ears. They, they listen to us, they nod, they smile, and then they go back to Madison and I think on that drive, they forget everything we just told them. It's pathetic. And I mean, it's just beyond frustrating and, and even our own representation is getting, I'm getting very fed up with the lip service and, and this is not a partisan thing. This is on both sides of the aisle where our funding structure is not sustainable. And, you know, the, the league sends out action alerts, I mean, I think we, I've been talking recently with league leadership about presenting this differently because a lot of times when you try to talk to your residents about government finance, they, it's not, you know, they just want to know what their tax bill is going to be.
Right.
But when you look at, when you hear the arguments about people saying in Arizona, they only pay $2,000 a year on property taxes on a property that's just as big as my house on 98th Street. But then you look at how much it costs you in Arizona to rent a car, or I'm sorry, register your car. You look at how much the sales tax in Arizona is. And granted, Arizona's got a pretty booming tourism industry with minor league baseball and, you know, the, the mountains and deserts and things, but, yeah, I'm just to answer your question, I'm sorry for rambling on, Mr. Chair, but yes, we have been lobbying for years and we're getting nowhere. I mean, the, you know, certain representatives will try certain things and then for whatever reason, whether they say it's their party's leadership, won't let it progress or won't let it advance within their caucus, but yes, we've been lobbying, we have just not been getting success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to give you a question. Yeah, I agree with you because that's why a lot of Illinois people, they go up north there because it's cheaper for them to come to Wisconsin, you know? That's, that's my question, you know? It's cheaper for them to come to Wisconsin.
Thank you for the presentation and the information is bad as it is. We'll move on to item three. Do we need the closed session for this item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Item three is a discussion regarding the lease between city of West Ellis, West Ellis Memorial Hospital Incorporated and Aurora Healthcare. And for this item, the committee of the whole may convene in closed session pursuant to provisions of the Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, current one, current E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties or the investing of public funds, the committee of the whole may reconvene in closed session, excuse me, after completion of the closed session, to consider the balance of the agenda. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Show move, Mr. Chair.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Stefanski? Vote aye or?
Oh, aye.
Alderman Weigle?
Aye.
Alderman Ro?
Aye.
Alderman Tenorio?
Aye.
Alderman Ranki?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Alderman Vitale?
Aye.
Alderman Keane and Alderman Prishamokhi. Thank you. It's unanimous, we are in closed session.
Did you want to?
Yes.